All right, if I have everyone's attention, we'll come back to order for our afternoon session on March 22nd, and I'll ask now at this time if Ms. Fox would read our next two docketed items.
Docket PZ 16-007, application has been filed by Pollard Builders LLC for the approval of a zoning map amendment on approximately 10.988 acres. The property is located at 1,000, 1,001, and 1,010 Oldham Oaks Road, LaGrange. The proposed change is from R4 residential to C2 community business. And docket PZ 16-008, application has been filed by Pollard Builders LLC for the approval of a development plan on approximately 10.988 acres. The property is located at 1,000, 1,001, and 1,010 Oldham Oaks Road, LaGrange. The property is Zone C2, Community Business.
All righty, thank you, and with that, Ms. Alvey, would you present the docket, please?
Absolutely. Again, Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. This is a twofold request. The first is a zoning map amendment, and then the second. Second is approval, request for approval for a development plan. The property is approximately 10.988 acres. The existing zoning is R4 residential, and the proposed zoning is C2 commercial. This is an area view of the two lots that are in question that are being requested for the rezoning. This is an aerial view of the property as well. Both lots are vacant. Our GIS has not had a current flyover, but Oldham Oaks Apartments are up in this area there. This is the current zoning of the properties surrounding. You'll see the property in question outlined in red, which is Zoned R4, and then there is R4A residential, R2A residential, R2. And then you'll see some commercial zonings along the side here. There is some industrial on this side, as well as CO1 conservation, which follows the corridor of I-71. This is the future land use map that came from our comprehensive plan. You'll see that the area here that I've circled, that is the two lots that are being requested for the rezoning today. The future land use map shows those properties as being commercial. And then across the street here and here, that is commercial industrial on there. And I'm not sure, I think this area here that still shows blue, I think that was, that's just maybe a drawing error or something that just didn't fill the whole lot in at the time when the map was drawn. Some site history, on May 27th of 2008, the Oldham County Planning Commission denied a request for a zoning map amendment from R2 residential to R4 residential and an accompanying development plan for 252 condominiums on 23.75 acres. That was docket PZ 08, 11, and 12. That same year, on December 15th, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a zoning map amendment from R2 residential to R4 and an accompanying development plan for 212 condominiums on 23.75 acres. Then, on three years later, on May 24th, 2011, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a revised development plan for development consisting of 216 lots on approximately 14 acres, Lot 1 being known as Oldham Oaks. Then on September 9th, 2011, a minor plat was approved, creating three lots from one. Lot 1 is the location of Oldham Oaks. Lot 2 and Lot 3 are the subject parcels in the current rezoning request. So this was the minor plat that was done in 2011, which created...
And I'm just going to correct, that said 216 lots, it was 216 apartment units.
It should have been units, yes. And then Lot 1 there, that is where Oldham Oaks Apartments is located, and then Lots 2 and 3 are highlighted there in the green and the red. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from R4 residential to C2 commercial on approximately 10.988 acres, which is currently two tracks. They are, the applicant is proposing to create a 1.941 acre tract from the east parcel, which is tract 29F, to construct a childcare facility. So this is the area of the two lots that is being requested for the rezoning. And then this is just a little zoomed, more zoomed-in version of the area that, for the minor plat, where they're carving off the 1.941 acres, and that tract A is where the daycare will be located. The applicant previously applied for a conditional use permit to have a childcare facility for four more children, which is listed as a conditional use under Section 100-030, under the R4 regulations. However, Section 260-140, under conditional use standards for daycare facilities, states that if the facility will have 13 or more children, that it is not permitted in any residential district and requires rezoning. So it's listed as a conditional use, but if you have 13 or more children, it requires rezoning. So that's why they're here today. Section 160-020, permitted uses for C2, again, business districts specifically list nursery schools, day nurseries, and childcare centers as a permitted use. This is the development plan for tract A. You would, you had revised plans that I set at your chair today. The only revisions that were made were based off our comments from TRC, which shows the location of the proposed detention area, and then they corrected the landscape buffer area that was along the west property line, and then they corrected the side yard setbacks as requested by staff. So the parking, the building, everything else is the same. They just made minor changes as requested by staff, and you should have those plans. And I believe they're dated the 17th. So if you get confused on which one it is, it should be the one I believe is dated March 17th as the revision date. Excuse me, so this is just a zoomed-in version of the development plan that kind of focuses more on the proposed daycare facility. This is the building renderings, the proposed design of the building. This is the floor plan. The proposed childcare facility is approximately 7,053 square feet with 31 total parking spaces. The current plan meets all other zoning regulations such as setbacks, parking, lot coverage, impervious surface, and floor area ratio. This is a view from Commerce Parkway looking into the site. These are the two lots here that are in question of the request of being rezoned. This is the east view, looking back towards LaGrange. This is LaGrange Baptist Church there. This is the west view, so this is Lot 2 that you can see there, looking towards Buckner. This is the south view, which goes across Commerce Parkway, and there's, I believe, nine or 10 acres across the road from it, and then this is I-71 along through here. This is looking into Lot 2. This is the lot that will be divided for the daycare. And then this just kind of gives you what the backs of the lots, how it abuts to Oldham Oaks. And this is a view from Lot 3, looking out towards Commerce Parkway. This is Commerce Parkway along through here. The remaining two tracks, Lot 2, which is 4.340 acres, and Lot 3, which is 4.70, 4.707 acres, do not have proposed uses at this time and would be required to return to the planning commission for a review and approval of future development plans. And that is all that I have.
All righty, and...
I want to add something as staff. I want the commission to understand that as staff, we met with the applicant and recommended that they bring in both of these lots at the same time for rezoning. It was our proposal because, again, the comprehensive plan suggests that it be commercial. They, the owners believe it will be commercial, and even though they were bringing in just this one lot with a development plan, we felt that it was appropriate to go through a zoning map amendment on both sides of Oldham Oaks Drive. So it was staff's recommendation to bring it forward. And just a reminder that you're going to recommend to the LaGrange City Council whether or not this zoning map amendment is appropriate.
And Paula has a presentation as well, so I don't know if you want to hold questions until she's ready?
Yeah, right, we'll get her presentation at the same time.
Okay.
And then we'll open it up for questions, so. Ms. Wall? Come on. Might not know, she is Oldham County's traffic consultant.
For the record, with Paula Wall with Neil Schaefer, 200 Whittington Parkway. All the zip's incorrect up there, 402-22. This project was on a little bit of a fast track, so the traffic study, I think you may have just gotten yesterday. So I'm not sure if you've had time to fully digest it. In fact, sometimes they're not fun to digest anyway, even if you do have time. But what I did, I did a summary, got a summary presentation, and then I'll go through fairly quickly, and then I've got some other slides in there that are more for detail if we need to go back and you have any, anything specific. As you've seen from the previous presentation, this is our site location on Commerce Parkway and Oldham Oaks. And then the development plan showing the three lots. To start the study, I initially did a site location and area field review. I get Amy to provide me some history on the previous planning decision for the apartments in the traffic study. And again, at the field review, I was, I did, I did, I did traffic counts and looked at the roadway conditions. The intersection that I evaluated was at their access road, which is Oldham Oaks Road and Commerce Parkway. I studied both the AM and PM peak hours, looked at several different scenarios, the 2016 existing, which included about 70% occupancy of the Oldham Oaks Apartments. Then I calculated a 2017 base, which would include 100% of the Oldham Oaks and some basic traffic growth of 2.5% per year, which I determined based on some historical traffic data. And then I went out to 2018 to look at those two, the lots 2 and 3, to evaluate the capacity and the function of the intersection. I've got some figures here that just demonstrate the AM and PM peak volumes of the existing and of the base. As you're probably familiar with in traffic studies, to, in order to project to future traffic, we use the ITI Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is a table that summarizes those calculations. The first set of data is for the apartments, that's completion of the 100%, of the units. And just so you know, when I looked at the existing traffic counts, it was 70%. They were under this 100%, and they were very much in line with what ITI would say for that number of units. So I felt very comfortable just looking at for 2017, the 100% development of apartments. We've also got the daycare center. Then for lots 2 and 3, the applicant provided me with some potential uses. Again, these are just speculative, and roughly the size of those uses that could be on it, just to kind of get an idea of what types of traffic could be generated by the different uses. So we had a tire store, auto parts store, furniture store, veterinarian, specialty retail. And on Lot 3, they're looking at most likely some kind of specialty retail. Potentially could be something else, but that's probably further out than the others, so that's, that's what was assumed for that. Specialty retail is like a small strip center, and generally, they don't have very much in the AM peak hour generators and more PM peak hour. They're like small shops, could be restaurants, could be insurance agent. I mean, it could just be a strip center with just several different uses in it. So in looking at that data, I started my analysis with looking at one of the higher trip calculations, which was a veterinarian. So I began my analysis for Lot 2 using the veterinarian, and then Lot 3, specialty retail. Those trips were assigned to the network, and these are the various figures that show that. We don't need to get into detail on those unless you get specific questions later.
Just for clarification, while you have them up there, the, the red, like the 84-61, just explain to folks what that means.
Like, on this graph, the red would be the total trips with lots 1 and 2, and the blue would be with lots 1, 2, and 3. And then the parentheses number is the PM number, so there's the AM and the PM. And those are assigned to the different movements that are demonstrated by the arrows there. So taking those results and those different scenarios, the first set of analysis that I went to was looking at auxiliary lane analysis, which is the state highways methodology, which is a standard transportation professional's methodologies, to look at whether at intersections or do you need separate left turn lanes or separate right turn lanes? Because as you know, this, this intersection is just a simple two-lane, two-lane. There's no separate turn lanes. So when you look at the analysis in 2017 with just the daycare, there is no requirement for a left turn lane into the development or a right turn lane into the development on Commerce Parkway. And just so you know, because I probably won't be talking about this more, there was never, any scenario, there was not a requirement for right turns. So we're going to kind of put that aside for now. The 2018 scenario, looking at with the daycare and Lot 2 as a vet, it indicates that an eastbound left turn would be required. So then I thought, okay, well, if, say that's, that's the high side of the generator, what's another generator that we could look at to see that, whether it was required or not? So then I looked at a tire store, and then it was not required. So we're on a, we're kind of on a line there, just depends on what type of use they're going to, specific use they're going to propose on those lots. But under any scenario, adding, adding, if you have a vet or a tire store, and you add that third lot with retail, a left turn lane is required of the ultimate development. It's my understanding that Commerce Parkway was built initially as a two-lane road, but ultimately, it has right-of-way for a five-lane section currently, which would include a left turn, but there's no funding available or it's not programmed to be done anytime, anytime soon. Don't worry, this is my final slide. So looking at the capacity analysis under all the scenarios, this is using highway capacity software for an unsignalized intersection. Existing analysis indicates that all movements are acceptable levels of service, and it will continue to operate at acceptable levels of service during AM and peak hour, AM, PM peak hours for all the scenario analyzed. And also, the analysis did not include any additions of any lanes. So this is, this is the most conservative analysis, assuming no improvements, just the geometrics that are existing today at the intersection. And just to summarize, the auxiliary lane analysis that I've just previously presented on Commerce Parkway, when you assume that only the daycare, that there's no indication that either, that neither the right turn lane nor the westbound right turn lane, left turn or right turn lane, is required with the construction of the daycare. And again, depending on the land use proposed for Lot 2 and 3, an eastbound left turn lane may or may not be required. So it's my recommendation that additional traffic analysis be required at the time of the development approvals for those lots, when we know a specific land use, and we can also go out and do updated counts, because it may, the daycare may not bear out to be as big a generator as I predicted, or it may bear out to be more than I predicted. So it would be a more accurate analysis to look at it at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we open it up for questions, Ms. Stuber, is there anything that you'd like to? I know there was a couple of questions, maybe about the detention basin or the west side, west side of the property. Is there anything that you wanted to add, or are you comfortable with what they are proposing as far as the detention and...
I really don't know what they're proposing, because honestly, today's the first day I've seen it. So I know we addressed questions at TRC, and it's only last week or so, but he has something marked on the plan now that is sort of in line with the apartment buildings. But no, I don't really have a lot of detail on it yet. Haven't seen any calculations or anything.
All right, commissioners, so open it up now for questions for staff. Have any questions for staff? Dr. Irvin first, and then I'll get Ms. Smith.
I was questioning the estimate of 70% occupancy of the Oldham Oaks Apartments. Was that an estimate, or is that an actual level of occupancy now?
That data was provided by the applicant, to me.
We don't know whether it was estimated or actual.
That might be a question we could ask the applicant here shortly.
Wasn't part of my scope to go out and...
But isn't that also that why you put in 100% next year? That even if it was short or wrong, at least she's projected next year to be 100% occupied, and there's a trip generation for 100% of 216 apartment units? So she's figured that in in her overall traffic assessment.
The applicant might have more up-to-date numbers or whatever, but, you know, Ms. Wall evidently just didn't do the count, or she didn't have the...
If the applicant would have told me that it was 100%, I would have used the data that I collected, because that's, you know, the Trip Generation Manual, again, are estimates over thousands of sites throughout the country. It's our averages.
Okay, anything else, Dr. Irvin? Okay, Ms. Smith?
Amy, when you spoke of the reason that we're here was 13 or more children, is that a state reg, or is that the county?
Well, it is listed that way specifically in our zoning regulations. The applicant and the proposed buyer of the property that's going to run it, they may be able to tell you more about what the state regulation is for it, but there are different certification levels based off the number of children. So I'm sure that, that obviously the state will have to review their plan as well.
Is that all? Okay, and Ms. Albertson?
Thank you. This is for Paula. Somewhere in here, it said this was the ninth version of something.
The Trip Generation Manual, ninth edition.
And what year was that published?
It's been a while. It's probably been at least, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that, but it's been over five years, probably. They're not updated very often. They're, there's three volumes of books, and they don't, they don't, unless you're obtaining local data to use yourselves in local studies. I mean, that is the industry standard, and they're not, they're just, they're not updated, you know, annually. It's probably every five to 10 years, something like that.
Kind of like our, our building code is 2012?
Well, I remember one year we were working with 2003 published, and I was just wondering if we're still dealing with 2003.
I'll check that for you and let you know. I don't, I can look that up probably when I sit back down.
Thank you.
Ms. Douglas? This might be a question for Ms. Stuber, or the, I guess, Ms. Stuber, then we can ask the applicant later. Oldham Oaks Road, is that still their private road, or has it been relinquished to the city?
Good question. It is going to go to the city. Have we gotten that final? It's been, minor plat's been done to turn it into right-of-way, to get it accepted by the city, but it's not theirs yet, is it?
Wait until they are...
Yeah, we can ask the applicant when they get...
Okay, well, then, my question will be is, is that, is that widening or roundabout or whatever it is, and the roadway already there? I don't, it's there?
Yeah, the, the bulb area that's on the, that's on the plan.
I, I thought it was too, and I know I've seen it on the picture, and I've been back there.
Yep.
And I noticed that there, do you have any concerns about? Because they're going to cut into that, and is that going to be? I mean, I'm sure the city's probably going to ask those questions.
Well, I looked at it, and it's unusual. Yeah, it's unusual, but I didn't see really an issue per se. It's just, I think it'll be safe enough.
My understanding would be they'd have to get an encroachment permit from Public Works or the city to get a driveway. And beyond that, to the north of that bulb is private property, because apartments are not public roads. So they are interested in having a public road lead up to that point. Once you get in there and you don't want to go, turn around necessarily on private property, you create a cul-de-sac, and that was why the original plan was laid out this way.
I could just see a legal problem if somebody's making a U-turn.
It'll be in public, it'll be in public right-of-way.
Public right-of-way, which is on a city street then.
Well, I guess it's just like any other cul-de-sac we have on, it's a city road. You have your driveways coming off of it.
Some divisions have cul-de-sacs and...
But usually, you don't, you have a dead end. You don't have another street, which is a private road, which you've got 200 vehicles or more parked in there. You follow what I'm saying? It seems like a traffic hazard to me, unless there's going to be controlled signs there somewhere. Traffic study done on that, I mean, because technically, if I was coming in there and I was going to go to the daycare, what's to stop me from just making a U-turn and whipping right out in front of somebody and picking up out front and parking out front?
It's you treat it like a, you're making a left.
You can see that they have their proposed here. So are you concerned that people will come here and turn?
No, they'll just, they'll just continue making a right and then turning around the cul-de-sac.
Come like this? Okay, I can't tell you what people, how people are going to drive, but...
Oh, yeah.
The applicant might be able to give us a little bit more insight into that here shortly. But is there any additional question? Oh, Mr. Finney, I think I saw your hand up.
I have a question for Ms. Wall. In, in your traffic studies, are you required to, or did you look at the traffic on Commerce Parkway?
That was included in my traffic counts, yes.
Okay, with the new business industry thing going in on Commerce Parkway, and such as the mega Kroger going in down the far end, are those considered in your calculations?
I didn't have any specific nearby developments to project growth, but I did look at historically what's been happening along that road, and it's such a short time period, number of years to project. I just used the 2.5, 2.5% per year. So it, just in general, just for traffic adding, adding on to it.
So the addition, the addition of something such as a super Kroger could increase that traffic significantly from 393 all the way back to LaGrange?
Where, where exactly is the Kroger going?
Out on the corner of 393 and Commerce.
Well, generally, something like a Kroger, you're going to attract cars that are already in that area, or maybe diverting from other, other places. It could have probably a slight increase, but it may not be that significant. It's depending on, because it's serving existing customers already, right? It's just relocating, or is it an absolute new Kroger? It's an absolute new Kroger?
Yeah, it's brand new.
393 is several, is like several miles away.
But on something like that, you can assign trips in certain directions. You usually pick that up in actual traffic counts later on, right?
Yeah, which is another reason why I'm suggesting that when the specific lot comes in, we'll do updated counts, and then we'll know, we'll have a better idea what, what else has happened. else has happened out there and how much more traffic has grown.
And, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but when, if you were to try to predict how many cars came down Commerce Parkway or went because of Kroger, you have other turning movements, like Button Lane, Allen Lane, you've got the new bridge. So you can't decide how many are actually going to be going all the way. Those usually come out in a traffic analysis, and you do traffic counts later on.
In order to do that, unless I had a specific, specific traffic study for that to see what they assigned that, you'd almost need a larger area type study. What I was looking at was more specific to that intersection.
Okay, thank you. All right, any additional questions for staff? Oh, Mr. Horton?
Yeah. I think we just got some of this information this morning, and I heard Ms. Stuber say that she hasn't seen the plan yet. I was looking for drainage and detention basin and so forth, and if the engineer hasn't seen the plan, and, and we don't know what it is, how do we, how do we deal with commentary about what she might or might not say, or...
You look at the TRC comments, it says that the drainage and detention will be addressed during construction plans. There's a note that's listed on your plan that has that, I think, believe it's note nine or 11, I can't see that far on there, that says that they will address that at the time of construction plans.
Okay, but I'm talking about other issues in addition, I mean, from the, from the county engineer. I mean, not only just drainage, but I mean, other issues, if she hasn't...
She saw the plan at TRC. Beth has seen it. She has comments in TRC. This is not the first time she's seen the plan. She might want to restate that.
Okay. I have seen the development plan. The development plan I saw at TRC did not have a detention basin.
Correct.
However, it was fairly obvious where it would go. It's not a huge surprise where they put it. So we'll have to work out the details of how much flow we're getting, et cetera, and making sure we're staying off the blue line when it comes to construction plans.
Okay, fine. Well, my concern was that you, you saw it and had input, and I wasn't sure when I heard you say that you...
I guess I said, I haven't seen the most current plan until today. But I had seen the other version.
Yeah, because her comments are in your TRC notes that you have.
Yeah. I was kind of going by what Ms. Stuber said, so it kind of caught me. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stuber. Amy, thank you, Ms. Sherman.
All right. Is that, is that all the questions from for staff at this point? All right, let's move on into presentation by the applicant, representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Club, I assume that would be you heading that up, and you have 50 minutes.
It is, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Irvin, Mr. Carter, Commission.
We could, we'll get everybody sworn in that's going to testify.
Absolutely.
Ms. Fox, if you could.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Club, just your name and address for the record.
Josh Club. I'm with Bramelin Club at 206 North Second Street here in LaGrange, Kentucky. Thank you, Ms. Alvy. Thank you, Ms. Wall and Ms. Stuber. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Pollard Builders LLC. Ms. Alvy, as usual, stole a lot of my thunder with her staff report, but that's absolutely fine. I'll try to hit the high points and not go over things that she's already gone over. She stated this is an application seeking a rezone approval for a 10.992 acre tract from R4 to C2, and the addresses on those lots, although they currently front on Commerce Parkway and Oldham Oaks Road, or 1000, 1001, and 100010 Oldham Oaks Road, LaGrange, Kentucky. Only one of the three proposed lots that we are seeking rezoning for today has a proposed use at this time, and that proposed use, the property is actually already under contract for the construction of a preschool and childcare facility to be run by Kids Haven by Sandy, which is currently a business located here in LaGrange, would be relocated from Yeager Avenue. I have with me several people today. I'd first like to bring up Morris Talbot, an engineer on this project, to speak to the next few slides. Morris, if you can come up.
Absolutely.
That's fine.
All right.
Mr. Talbot, if you would, just name and address for the record also, please.
Yes, my name is Morris Talbot. I'm licensed engineer in the state of Kentucky, and did the engineering work on this, surveying and engineering work on this, on this project. Couple of things, I guess, I really need to speak about. Some concern about the cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac that is on the north end of this project. And when we brought the development plan in for the apartments, there was a concern there that there needed to be school buses back to that point to let students off and on, and that's the reason for the cul-de-sac, and, and that's what's being used today. Its adequate radius allows buses to come in and, and make that U-turn, let students off, make the U-turn, and come on back out. So that's the history of the cul-de-sac, and I think it really needs to stay, because there was concern that they don't want to get buses back into the apartment. There's really not enough room and, for buses, and this is the closest and best location for the cul-de-sac.
Mr. Talbot, there are actually bus stop shelters built there in that cul-de-sac.
There, there is, yes. The apartment complex has built a shelter right there at the corner just as you come onto the property.
Can you show us, just touch the screen there as to approximately where that is?
It's right, right there. So, projectionist, I forgot how to re-rate this thing.
Okay, okay.
It's hard to pinpoint that. It's on your site plan. If you look at the end of the cul-de-sac, it's labeled where the existing bus shelter is. It, it did kind of show up that it was in the cul-de-sac. It's not, it's on the...
Yeah, my finger, I need a sharper finger on that. This, this property was developed, and all of the utilities were installed. There's sanitary sewers, a new water line, fire hydrants. Everything is there. It's, it's kind of a shovel-ready project. I know that's kind of an overused term, but it is ready for development. The, also has a walking trail on there, was part, that was added when we brought the development plan in for the apartment complex, and that's the walking trail is in this area right there. And it runs from Clifford Lane, almost to Clifford Lane, down and ties into the, to the new bike path along Commerce Parkway. Sidewalks will be built along Oldham Oaks Drive as the, as the property is developed. The road was built to county standards, correct width, curb and gutter, stormer sewers, and we are in the process of getting that, the city to accept maintenance responsibility for that roadway. That's about all I have at this time, unless you have some questions, which I'm sure we'll get to in a few minutes.
What is the status of having the city take over that road? If you can expand on that?
Mr. Pollard has, we did a plat on the area to be taken over. Mr. Pollard has signed the ownership and dedication certificate. We've made a request for the bond release, and that was delivered to Ms. Stuber for processing, which I understand it begins with her.
And one last question. If you could speak to the detention area that's noted on the plat. That was a change that was made after TRC? If you can just let the commission know what work you've put into creating that this time?
The, the site is really marginal, whether it needs detention, but, you know, we, we want to do the right thing. So we went back and looked at it, and put detention there at the rear of the daycare, proposed daycare building, and works fine. I mean, it's, it's plenty adequate. The note that was referred to was that we would do the hydraulic analysis and fine-tune that when we do, if you all elect to approve this, and we would certainly refine our efforts on that with the construction plans.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to bring up Sandy Johnson, who's the owner of Kids Haven, to tell you, the commission, a little bit about the, the project that she is going to be taking in. If you could state your name and address.
Good afternoon. It was morning. That was my speech, but good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sandy Johnson, and I have owned Kids Haven by Sandy for 18...
Give us your address, please. Just a work address would be fine.
230 Yeager Avenue, LaGrange.
Sandy, tell, tell the commission a little bit about the business that you're currently operating there at Yeager Avenue. How long have you been in business, for instance?
I have been there 18 years. Nine years prior to that, I had a center in Louisville. So I have almost 27 years in the childcare industry.
Are you licensed?
Yes, we are a type one facility.
What's that mean?
That means that you have over 13 children, and there's no actual limit on the amount of children that you can license within their scope. Currently, I am licensed for 115 children in my current facility. I guess, over the last 18 years, a lot of things have transpired. I opened that center with no children. Today, I have approximately 82, and that fluctuates between 82 and 100 children. The building, it has a lot of age and a lot of need for improvement, and I do not own that building. I rent my space. So for the past five years, I've been looking for a place that I can build and call my own. I have approximately 15 staff people that work for me, and most of them have been with me between two and 12 years. So I have a pretty established, long-time group of employees.
And Sandy, is preschool incorporated into your childcare?
Yes, it is. We have preschool in every single classroom, beginning with our nursery, and going up to our pre-K program, which prepares the children to be ready for kindergarten. I do also offer after-school care and a summer camp for elementary-age children.
Thank you. And your hours of operation, as it states on the presentation, are from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's what they are currently?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a site plan, but basically, this is going to be a brand-new construction, correct?
Yes.
And it's 7,053 square feet?
That's correct.
And the anticipated construction start date, assuming approval here and by the LaGrange City Commission, will be on or about June 1st, and you're ready to move in tomorrow?
Yes.
But your anticipated occupancy date will be January 1st of 2017. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And Ms. Alvy's already shown the outside elevations. This is the building that you have contracted for and expect to be built on the premises, correct?
Yes, it is.
I believe that the, actually, the top picture is going to be a view from the rear of the building. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then we have a different view from the southeast and a view from the southwest of the front of the building with a covered drop-off area, I presume. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of any witnesses, and that would conclude my presentation at this time.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the application? Anyone else to speak in support of? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone here that would have, let's see, testimony and questioning with anybody opposing the application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? All right, seeing none. We will now open it up for questions from the commissioners to the applicant. I do have a couple of questions, if I could, Mr. Club. The, I didn't see any evidence of any fenced-in area. Is there going to be any ex, ex area outside that will be fenced in, where the children will be playing outdoors?
Kind of hard to see on here, but this is the...
This turned around.
Yeah. This is the playground. This is kind of distorted for some reason, I'm not sure. But the playground area is in this area right here.
Okay.
And there's a, it, it is required to be fenced and screened, buffered. So, and it, and if you look on the development plan, I think that indicates that wording on there.
Okay, I see it on, on the plan here. Okay, and then...
And then the landscaping plan, of course, will be, what have I done there?
Sorry.
The landscaping plan will be, of course, determined after approvals and so forth. So we're, we're getting to that point. And I've indicated some locations for landscaping on there. But we'll be, we'll be working on that once you all approve this plan.
And I'll ask, I guess, Ms. Alvy, is the parking that's proposed adequate for the number of folks that'll be using the facility?
Yes.
Okay. And how many spaces is that, do you know?
I just listed, I can pull it up on my plan. I want to say, yeah, 27, I believe is what it is listed on.
All right, that's all I have. Is, any other questions from the commissioners? Any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. McWilliams?
Club?
Sir.
Off the top of your head, do you know, Ms. Club, it's not a trick question, I promise. No, that's what you're thinking. I can tell by that look. But do you know what determines the size of a playground area with a daycare facility?
Can you help me with that?
Ms. Sandy Johnson, would you bail the attorney out?
Yes, we have very strict guidelines for children. Playground area has to be 60 square feet per child.
Okay. So I'm assuming your playground area is based on your capacity?
Well, yes and no. We're not allowed to mix our age groups of children. So my class size is not going to be any larger than, I think my largest one would be maybe 30. I don't, that may be too high. But they all, they all go on a schedule of playground time. So, yes, we won't have the entire 135 children on the playground ever.
Okay, okay. What's the surface on the playground?
It'll be grass, and then specific mulched areas where the play systems will be located, and I have real strict guidelines for that as well.
And I know where you're, you're currently located, you're renting.
Yes.
Are you going to be renting this facility or owning this facility?
I'm, well, I'm going to own the building.
Mr. Patrick Pollard's not going to own it either.
No, I'm owning it. I'm owning it.
It's checking.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Horton?
Thank you. Busy listening to that question. I know what you do is under state regulations and under jurisdiction, and this is just from my own curiosity. It doesn't have anything to do with actually this hearing, but are you, do you have any special needs children in this daycare, and, and if so, how many of them by regulation or by choice would you have?
Okay, well, special needs is a broad scope. We have several children, which we would consider somewhat special needs, because they have attention deficit disorder. We do not have any per se handicapped children at this time, but I have enrolled children with cerebral palsy and different conditions. So my property, you know, has to be with ADA and...
So you might...
I would not turn those down unless those specific children, unless I could not care for them properly.
Okay, so ADHD children, or oppositional defiant disorders, or any of those things?
Yes, we already have those.
You would have, you would have the ability to, to determine which ones you were capable of helping and staying, and which ones would be too much for you to handle?
Yes.
And of course, that is regulated by state and by other things.
If those children needed, for example, care from a nurse or whatever, I, I would not be equipped to care for them.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Following with that, I want to add. Following with that question, if you, would you admit a CP child who needed someone with them constantly, that's cerebral palsy?
If, if that child had a car... If, if that child had a caretaker that came with them, yes, I would be willing to enroll that type of a student. I did have one. I did have a case of a child with cerebral palsy, and he did have a caretaker that came with him every day.
They pretty much have to have that.
Yes.
You're currently next to the library. Is that where you are now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? All right. I don't see any more hands going up, so at this time, we'll move into final statement. Mr. Club?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as I usually do, I don't know whether you all care for these or not. I've brought a proposed motion. If I could please present that at this time. This application, if you go look at the comprehensive plan that Oldham County has adopted, the first section of my motion incorporates all of the goals and objectives that this plan meets. They're numerous. This property does border, which I think is ironic, Commerce Parkway, as you can see, coming from La Grange, is developed now. It is moving this way, continues, the commercial development continues to get closer and closer to this property. Actually, it's kind of diagonal from this property at this time. If you look at the future land use map, as adopted by the comprehensive plan, both this property as well as the property owned by my client on the other side of Commerce Parkway, and actually the lot extending towards Jefferson County are all proposed to be either industrial or commercial uses in the future. So I think it's clear that this development, specifically these tracts, have been envisioned by the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan to be zoned as commercial. I feel it's an appropriate rezoning. I feel that the business that is proposed for the first lot of this development that you've heard about today will be a great addition to this county. If you've got small children, I'm sure you can all appreciate, or have had small children, can appreciate how hard it is to find quality daycare service, which I know is what Sandy will provide. If you have any further questions for us, I'll be happy to answer them, but thank you for your consideration.
That completes your application?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, commissioners, we will consider the zoning change, zoning map amendment first, which is the first docketed item here, the 16007. And I'll ask Mr. Urban to outline the proposed binding elements that would be attached to this, and also what we need to consider for this proposed zoning map amendment.
Well, again, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the legislative body, which in this case is La Grange City Council. So your motion is to either recommend or deny a zoning map amendment. You have sample, as always, sample motions in your packet. And along with that, I would recommend that you, if you are going to make a motion for, to recommend approval, that you only place one binding element on the zoning map amendment, and that is that all future development plans on lots two and three must come before the TRC and Planning Commission.
Okay.
Mr. Club did not only give you a proposed motion, but in your packet, there's a zoning justification statement that was submitted by the applicant, and you can rely on those in your motion.
All right. Mr. Carter, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, commissioners, you've heard Mr. Urban outline what is being requested on the docket PZ 16007, which is the request for a zoning map amendment on 10.988 acres. And the request is from R4 Residential to C2 Community Business. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion on this docket for the zoning map amendment. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will move for approval of the zoning map amendment as requested. Based on testimony provided and submissions from the applicant, I agree that it complies with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, specifically those cited LU 1-3, LU 3, LU 3-1, LU 3-2, and BI 1. Along with that, I would ask to incorporate the binding elements plus the notation made by Mr. Urban that any plans for lots two and three must come before planning and zoning. I believe that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes.
All right. You've heard the motion proposed. Do we have a second?
I have seconds.
Alvy, seconds? Okay. Now, any discussion on the motion to approve the zoning map amendment on docket PZ 16007?
Again, it's recommend approval.
Okay, I'm sorry, recommend approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Seen none? Are we ready to vote? Okay. Ms. Fox, would you take the vote then on the docket PZ 16007 for a recommendation to the legislative body of La Grange on a zoning map amendment from R4 to C2 Community Business?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mick Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
All right. The motion to, on the docket PZ 16007, a recommendation to the legislative body of La Grange, has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. So with that, now we will, the chair will entertain a motion on docket PZ 16008. And I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So at this time, I'll ask Mr. Urban if he would outline what's being requested at this point.
Should the La Grange City Council go along with your recommendation and choose to change the zoning map, it would be appropriate then to consider the proposal, development plan proposal for a daycare on a portion of the property that's being rezoned. In your packet, you have proposed conditions of approval. I'll read them. The first is, any amendments to the development plan must be reviewed by the Oldham County Planning Commission. A comprehensive sediment erosion control, erosion plan should be developed, and a soil erosion bond be posted before any site disturbing activity occurs pursuant to the soil erosion control requirements of the construction site runoff ordinance. Number three is, a sediment erosion control plan shall be included, shall include a phasing plan that limits the amount of sediment exiting from the site. Number four is, development plan must comply with the Oldham County Fire Hydrant Ordinance. Number five is, all easements requested by the utility or services agency shall be provided and labeled on the construction plans. And number six is, a landscape plan must be submitted to staff for review and approval. And I didn't hear any other potential conditions of approval during the presentation.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
This sounds good to me.
Okay, all right.
And just for the record, there aren't any waivers or variances requested in this application.
Okay. You've heard what's been outlined and what's being requested here. At this point, the chair would now entertain a motion on docket PZ 16008, a development plan. Mr. McWilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to move that the commission approve the development plan to include conditions approval, of approval that were shared with us just by, minutes ago with, by Mr. Urban. Because it complies with the objectives of our comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance that is applicable for this particular piece of property and this area, I don't, there are additional reasons, but I don't think, I think that's probably all we need for the motion, so.
Carter, is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Our attorney says that is adequate. So with that, do we have a second for Mr. McWilliams's motion? Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith seconds the motion. Do we now have, I'll put it up for discussion, on a motion to approve the development plan? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Douglas and then Mr. Horton?
I think we're supposed to add an air recommendation for approval, right, to go to the city council?
No, not on the development plan, just on zoning map amendment.
Right. The, the, procedurally, the La Grange City Council will see the development plan, but they only have one decision to make, and that's really the approval of the, or consideration of the zoning map amendment.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
Yeah, just a comment. It just occurred to me that I could see in the future maybe more and more and more children coming out of this apartment complex, and the bus turning around and so forth. And rather, I can't ask unless the chair does so. I wonder if they've ever considered some type of short, small fencing in the front of this property to delineate a little bit of a barrier between what might be happening in the future, numbers of kids coming out of the apartment, buses turning and so forth, just some sort of a fence in the front? I wonder if they had...
I think we've already closed the hearing, and we've, you know, we've already approved the zoning map, request for zoning map amendment. And so, you know, that might be a recommendation that they might consider or whatever, but I don't, I don't think it would be appropriate to open the hearing back up.
All I wanted to do was bring it to the floor so that they could be thinking about that. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any further discussion? Mr. McWilliams?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I can testify here, can I?
Well, you can say what's on your mind, sure.
Until you tell me I've gone too far.
We can always bang the gavel.
Continue on.
It happens. I just would hope that the commission would approve this. There's certainly a need for the additional daycare in the county, and it's going to be in this area particularly. You have absolutely incredible people that will be running this daycare, and Mr. Patrick Pollard and his assistant, Dennis, do a great job of construction. So there's just no reason in my mind for us not to let this happen, support this.
Can I ask one other question? There is a daycare right down the street, going back toward...
Yes.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion on the development plan, motion to approve the development plan? Okay, seen none? We all, I'll ask Ms. Fox if she will take the vote, and this is a motion on docket PZ 16008, approval of the development plan. Ms. Fox?
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingenfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mick Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, on docket PZ 16008, the motion to approve the proposed development plan has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. Thank you all. And with that, we'll take about a 10-minute recess.